Good evening. It is 6 o'clock, Tuesday, October the 24th. I'd like to call this meeting of the Montgomery City Council into session at this time. Thank you for your attendance, those that are here and those tuned in from afar. We appreciate your interest in our city. I'd like to ask you to turn off any electronic devices to avoid any interruption in our proceedings this evening. And with that, we do have a quorum. All five council members are here. Mr. Palmer and administration as usual are present. So I'd like to ask you to join me for the invocation given by Stan Donaldson, followed by the pledge to our flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for another opportunity to serve Montgomery. We thank you, Lord, that our purpose is to do what's right in your sight, Father, and help this city grow and multiply and cause it to be a place of peace and freedom, Father, for all that come here. We thank you, Lord, that decisions we make tonight, Father, will prove to be beneficial to the city and all of its residents. We thank you for this evening in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Salute to the American flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, under the visitor's citizens forum, I did not receive any requests to speak. Under consent agenda, item one, consideration of possible action regarding an escrow agreement by and between the city of Montgomery, Texas and Lone Buff Ventures LLC for the convenience store development to be located at Town Creek Crossing, Section 1 Commercial Reserve D, a 1.642 acre parcel of land at the northwest corner of Lone Star Parkway and Buffalo Springs Bridge Drive Development Number 2306. It's the council's pleasure. Any information from council or staff? This is pretty standard stuff. All right? All in favor? Or do I have a motion? Still looking? Okay.
I'll move with approving the escrow agreement as presented.
Motion by Stan to approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second that motion.
The second is by Carol. The motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving consent agenda item one, escrow agreement as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And we will approve consent agenda item one.
Can I ask, we haven't had minutes, I think, in a month. Do we know when we're going to get some?
Sure, November 12th, the next meeting.
So there'll be three meetings worth?
There'll be, I know where your workshops too.
Okay, all right, awesome, thanks.
Okay. All right. Moving on, under item two, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation for the funding of capital improvement projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the course of the past couple of months, we've held several workshops on our capital improvement plan. Many of those projects are water infrastructure projects that we must do next year just to maintain the infrastructure. The estimated cost is around $5 million. We decided to issue certificates of obligation to pay for these projects. The debt from the COs will be paid by user fees. This resolution in front of you tonight is simply a notice of intent for us to issue that debt. There's a process that follows after that. I may have to answer any questions.
Gary, I appreciate all the help you did with this, and you've been speedy and timely. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
For the public to know, we, like I said, we have covered these things thoroughly through workshops, and we felt like that was the best way to get to this point. And so, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept item number two as presented.
I second that.
Motion is by Sarah. The second is by Cheryl. The motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any further discussion?
With the change on Exhibit A from 7 to 6 o'clock?
Yes, it was. I have the coffee and the air is active tonight.
Yes, cool.
Okay, good point. All right, along with that change, the motion and the second is there. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, say no. We will approve item two. Item three, consideration of possible action on the appointment. Kristen, is Kristen here? Gildanage?
Gildanage.
Okay. To place one on the planning and zoning commission. Gary, is there provisions to speak in this time, or?
Yeah, with the candidates here, if you want to ask her any questions, I don't know if I have that. Good time to have that discussion, but our recommendation is to approve.
I just have one question. In your application and then your letter, you said you had a small business here in town?
Yes, a visit coffee shop.
Okay, and it was located in the?
In the downtown area, yeah, about five years ago.
What was the name of the shop?
It was called Naughty By Nature.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
It was Naughty By Nature, a poppy curry coffee cafe.
Was that for 25 years?
I'm sorry.
Your bio says you have owned a business for 25 years, so that was for five years?
That was five years ago. No, we only had it for a couple months.
Okay.
That's during COVID, and so they came off.
Necessary.
It was so hard for buying people to work.
For sure.
So, yes, I was like, we can have it.
And what else, what other businesses have you had here for 25 years?
Here in Montgomery?
Yes.
So I have not owned businesses here in Montgomery for 25 years. I own businesses for?
That's how I read it, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for item three?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kristen Gildanage to place one of the planning and zoning commission.
Motion by Casey, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there is no second?
No, I'll second.
You will second?
Yes.
So Stan is the second. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any other discussions? All in favor of approving item three as stated to appoint Kristen Gil, I'm sorry, Gildan?
Gildanage.
Gildanage to the planning and zoning commission. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That is Casey and Stan. All opposed, say no.
No.
And that's obviously no. And so we will not approve that appointment for item three. Item four, consideration of possible action on the appointment of Tom Chulowitz to place five on the planning and zoning commission.
Same thing, Mr. Lowes is here. I met with Tom for a couple hours, had a great discussion.
Your son is Jim.
Yes, my son is Jim.
And that's Urban Coffee.
Urban Coffee, yes.
Okay, I have coffee there on a regular basis.
Yeah, I understand.
So I was a little confused because he has expressed interest before.
Yes.
Very impressed with your service to the country and background.
Survived serving on two different HOA boards.
Yep.
Yes.
That is a survival thing.
Funny, huh, Joel?
They never had my house air.
Good job. Make the motion, Sarah.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept item number four as presented.
Second.
Motion is by Sarah. The second is by Casey. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Tom Chulowitz for planning and zoning commission, place five, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And we will appoint Tom Chulowitz to place five, planning and zoning. Item five, application for a city alcoholic beverage permit for 14335 Liberty Street, Montgomery, Texas, 77356.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is an application for the city alcohol beverage permit by the applicant, Mr. Ryan Laut. It's going to be called Quot Kite, is that correct?
Yes.
This application is sitting here with me, and all I am seeking is your approval. I do have a TABC application here to certify this evening to get set off, but I want to give, a city permit does not be issued until it's time to add the TABC permit issued there.
Right. So did we ever look at swapping the way we do this? I know our procedure is backwards.
We try to create a proper procedure. Right now, I follow the existing ordinance.
Yes.
So that will be developed once I have some more time to do that.
Nothing, there was a liquor license at the previous business, if I remember right. So nothing's changed around it to cause any concern for this?
No, they've got them the same on the next one.
Yeah, been there before.
I make a motion to accept item number five as presented.
Second.
Motion by Sarah. The second is by Casey. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item five as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And we will approve item five as stated. Item six, consideration of possible action approving a resolution for the city of Montgomery to participate in the Texas Smart Buy membership program of the Texas Controller of Public Accounts, allowing the police department to purchase DPS-approved toxicology blood and alcohol test kits accepted by the Texas Department of Public Safety Crime Lab. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to ask that you approve our membership in this, with the Smart Buy membership. This is where we get our blood kits to test our toxicology and our alcohol testing. This is the only test that DPS Lab will accept, so we've been using them. We use about, we normally collect about, maybe about 60 a year, anywhere from 30 to 60 a year. The cost for the membership is $100 a year. We spend about $725 on each one of these kits. And we normally pick up about 30 from the first batch, if we need them after that, but they're used for all our toxicology, and it is the only kit that they will allow, that DPS will test. So we need you guys to approve the membership. Thank you.
Okay, straightforward.
How much per kit? How much?
Seven bucks.
Okay, good. Seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
I make a motion that we accept Proposition 6 as read.
Motion is by Cheryl. The second is by Stan. The motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. I might add that, Chief, that might not be a bad idea because Stan's giving me ride home tonight. Just in case. All right, so we have motion and second, and so all in favor of approving item six, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone in favor, say no, and we will approve item six. Thank you, Chief. Item seven, consideration of possible action on the acceptance of the waterline infrastructure for Montgomery Bend, Section 1.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On page 43, you're packing to see the memo from Dave, followed by a memo from us on page 44. So what this is, is Montgomery Bend, Section 1, who had their final plot approved a couple meetings ago, and has paid their rent back fees, would like to get the waterline infrastructure accepted so they can begin setting temporary meters to start their model home and rec center construction. So what this item is, is only for the water. We're not talking about anything on the sewer system, the roadways, or anything else. This is just to allow construction to start on those models. So we'll come back to you for full acceptance of the section when the lift station is complete and when the tech driveway work is complete, and at that time, we'll be able to get full building permits and actually issue COs. But what this does is just, says we're setting temporary water meters so that the builders can use them to have accepted that piece of the infrastructure. It was inspected, tested, and everything passed.
Everybody good? All right, item 10, motion.
Make the motion to accept item seven as presented.
Motion by Casey. The second is by Stan. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item seven as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We will approve item seven. Item eight, discussion only of the city council term duration.
So this was brought to me by a council member to look into, and I provided some information to pack this, it's regularly about the same since we're in a type A municipality. Also, the badge refers back to the Constitution, which I also added in there, which basically says you can do it, you can change your terms to four years max by refer.
You can change them as high as four.
Up to four, okay. Yeah, that's, so if you go to page, as I was trying to figure out what this is about, if you go to page 58, that's what really applies to us.
Home rule city, they provide a charter, or charter amendment, and a city, town, village operator with general laws, they provide by majority vote of the qualified voters voting, and an election call for that purpose for a longer term of office than two years for its officers, either elected or appointed in the vote, but not by two years.
And so we accept this, and it's accepted, and we begin that now? So then, the next election cycle, where do those people go? Because it's a two-year?
You vote on it. So we kick it out to the vote?
Okay.
A public vote?
Okay.
If it passes, it would only apply to newly elected officials.
Gotcha.
Everybody else finishes their two term.
Very good.
If you get reelected, then you would start on whatever, three or four years.
And the other thing is too, other than the two years now, you have the option, like Casey had talked about, three years, which might be better than a four-year. He said up to four years. But I was thinking, and I responded back to Caleb when he had asked about that, is the fact that the city's growing so much, and a two-year term, really, you don't get a lot done, and it doesn't have a lot of continuity with all the growth and everything in that area. I feel like that possibly, I think maybe Casey's right, a three-year term would be good, and they would go two off, you know, every year, two off. That way, your council would be more consistent and have more continuity to it.
So every two years, there would be a council vote, not every?
No, every year, we swap out two members.
Gotcha, okay, every year, but two members off and two members on, yeah.
Yeah, four years is, I don't know, that's, I think that was originally, what you were originally?
That's what I said originally, because I kept seeing the four years, but I think that three years is like you and I talked about, might be something better, because, and then, instead of having three go off, and, you know, because actually, you're decimating the whole council when you're, every year that you're doing that, so. I think with all the growth and everything, I think that it might?
School board is three.
It's three, yeah.
How many?
School board is three, yes.
There are other cities that seem to be in that pattern of going three. Cities outside.
And does everyone in council think that that's a good thought or not?
Well, it's worth the discussion. I just, when we swap out half the council every year, basically, it really throws a hooey in agendas. You get a plan going, and then all of a sudden, here it is, we've got three new members that have a whole new idea, and it's really hard to get things done.
Or when the new ones come on, and it's a matter of, you know, getting them up to speed of what's actually happening.
Yeah, the simulation, I can tell you, from council to mayor is a good six months. It just is. It takes five to six months to figure out which way's up, where you've been, where you headed, and all that. So, yeah, it is a good half a year almost, you know, getting really into it. So I think three is probably a good number.
Of course, I think the downside is, it's kind of hard to find candidates to run for two.
It already is. Probably already, it would continue to be hard.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? That's discussion only? Everybody good? So we'll go to departmental reports. Item nine, October sales tax report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Direct your attention to the sales administrative report right here. Going past the cover page, you had 6,303 active taxpayers in your last confidentiality report, and for October, you have 2,367. And so with the October 22, you have 2,341, you're a 1% increase with an average of 2,356. And the page after that will be your October's top 12, excuse me, top 25, 12 months. And so you have McCoy's, Kroger, and Chick-fil-A at the top. And if you'll note, the Patterson UTI Drilling Company, that is a business of note, it's recently just popped on your confidentiality report, and it's already on your top 25. And so, I don't know if this is just a, it doesn't have a physical address, and so it's a outside company, and so just to keep in mind for budgeting purposes, it contributed quite a bit this last month. And so if you look at your confidentiality, you'll be able to see the actual allocation. And so just keep that in mind for future budgeting purposes, it's not necessarily a in-district business entity.
Is Mike, is he gone tonight?
He is, and I received.
Okay. I think that's the directional drilling company that put in all of the fiber.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And so, yeah, they're kicking in quite a bit of sales tax.
Did all, what, Casey put in?
Did all the fiber for?
They did all the fiber for?
Yeah, for TACUS. That would make sense.
And your page after that will be your October 2023 sales tax filers, the top 25. And then again, the, where is the, the UTI, UTI drilling services right there as well. And then your top 25 have contributed 56% of your allocations for October, and then the top 1,000 businesses are contributing $1,000 or more for your top 25, excuse me, or 72 businesses, and that reflects 76% of your allocations for the month. Page after that will be a comparison of October to September, and they're both non-quarterly filers. And so just McCoy's, Millennium, and Chick-fil-A at the top as well, and then your peak building and WGR operations at the bottom.
They're exactly the same.
Yeah. And the page after that will be your October 2023 allocations comparison. And so for October 2023, you made $446,077.21, 21% increase over October 2022, which is And so far, for your fiscal year of 2024, I've got $446,686.17, 9% to your budget. I put the last year's budget, and then I'll re-verify with your accountant, and then put the correct budget, if that's the newer budget. But right now, you're at $4.866 million for your budget for 2024. And then so at the value of your total allocations, we'll be $45,817,465.03. And then bringing your calendar average so far of $3,970,695.52. And then your average so far, $397,695.55.
Can I ask you a question on this?
Please, ma'am.
I'm looking at the total allocations, and in five years, we have doubled. Is that normal?
When we first took over, there were quite a few business entities that were not on your confidentiality report.
Okay.
And so we added a bunch, and then you guys have kind of?
Hypergrowth, okay, I'm just?
If you look at your, and then plus, actually, the last three years, your city is actually considerably growing, so you'll jump up considerably as well, as like all the?
It just seems really quick.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's growing very fast.
Thank you.
All right, the page after that will be your monthly allocation graphs, and just reflecting all the way back to 2017. And then right there, you can also see the 2017, $145,000, and then 2023, you're $333,000. And so, quite a substantial growth. Page after that will be your graphs for previous year by month variance, and that's reflecting the 21% over last year. And page after that will be your yearly allocations trends, going back from 2018 to 2024. And page after that will be your mean and median trends, and then followed by the NAICS code descriptions. And so far, if you remember last time, I did submit a couple, four business entities to the controller for review, and I'm waiting for an answer for them. I don't know if they've forgotten. I'll be sending an email for them, and hopefully I'll have a update in December when I come back. And that is for the business entities that are operating within your district or your city that have sales tax IDs that are slated for somewhere else, like Magnolia, if there's a couple that are slated for Magnolia, and I'll put those in there. And usually, they'll go from the accounts examiners to the enforcement department, and then they'll come out if they need to and move everything around, make sure that they have the proper sales tax permit, and issue them again. And so, I'll have more news for that in December. And that's all I have for you. Any questions, concerns, comments?
All right?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, utility operations report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Your September report, there were no district alerts for the month. Page three will be your wastewater plant flow detail. Your average flow for the month was 214,000 gallons, a little bit above your three-month average. Your discharge limitations are, everything was met, it was within compliance this month, no issues. Page five will be your well pumpage. It's gone down significantly this past month for well two and three permit, you know, right under 20 million gallons left, and well four, right under 30 million gallons. So should be fine for this year with Lone Star. Page six will be groundwater production. And then the last page, so our last page is your water accountability. They're all at 96%, about your average, rolling average, very good. I don't know if y'all have any questions or concerns.
Any? All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Item 11, municipal court.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The municipal court report collections for September, citations were 220, and the revenue connections, collections were $35,108.51. Are there any questions for the municipal court? Thank you.
Thank you. 13, public courts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. You have a police report in front of you. You have any questions or stomachs?
Thank you, sir, for keeping us safe and running in the harm's way for it.
If you have any questions, I'll relay to you.
Now, is there any questions for public courts to relay? All right, now, item 14, special events.
Actually, I do want to bring up one thing.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, I do want to bring up one thing about, you know, we're swapping our utility, our water utility provider, or our service provider, and also our tabs are going to go up. So just to put that out there, if anybody's looking to put in a meter, do it before our prices go up.
Before November the 1st?
Is it November 1, or is it January?
Is that when?
I think it's January.
January, so we have some runway for PSA.
I'm pretty sure it's January.
I think it's January, because by the time the posting has happened, the phone days, we will be looking at December, before we can actually approve it off of those dates.
Well, that PSA go out in the water bill as well, and we're doing anything else? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we cover all those bases. What's going up in the water bill? What's going, the PSA, the public service announcement, that we're going up on tabs, pricing, cost? Just on tabs, I don't need a new tab. Okay. Unless you want to pay for one. No, no, no. Okay. Nope.
Anybody else? All right, we ready for special events? All right, we ready for special events?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you, you'll find the 2023 October report along with the upcoming events. And this Saturday, we'll be having the trick-or-treat event in memory. Do you have any questions?
So, do you have a September event report?
I can provide you one if you want to.
I just see October and I didn't see it, okay. Thanks. This is almost September stuff. We're all going over September stuff. The quilt walk was very well intended, wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I think so, very much so. Good stuff. And the weather was fantastic for it. How's the festival going?
It's going good. It's kicking up and it is, we have more attendees every time.
Yeah, there's a lot of happy campers.
And more vendors.
Yeah. How's movie night going? Is that?
It usually depends on the weather. So far it's going good.
Good.
Have good weather.
I wish more people take advantage of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. I'm showered with members.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 15, city engineer.
All right, if you can begin, starting on page 93 of your packets. Item number one, the water plant two improvements. Reminder, we were authorized to begin the design work, substitute the hydraulic with the report coming in. So we're starting preliminary work that's going to be done regardless. But waiting on the hydro report, which is number two, and your Lone Star permit. We expect to have that report back from our consultant in the next few weeks. One thing to note, and Jacob mentioned on his report, is Lone Star data proved for this year a buffer because of the drought over the summer. So there's automatic buffer put in. So we have more wiggle room in our, in our permit. Park Street Boulevard, contractor's still working on those puntous items. He was out of town for a while, so he's now back in to catch back up on those. Water plant three improvements. Once the operator switch is complete, we will have an additional inspection later this fall. There are some tanks that were recoded as part of that improvements project. We did the one-year warranty in August, which is not the ideal time to take a take offline. So we waited until the fall to have that interior inspection complete. On to page two of our report, item five. Your phase one Santracure rehab project is underway. A few pictures of their progress. We didn't have any passings this month. And as of right now, they're working out front of the Heritage Building in the papers. The phase two project that is listed is item six. So again, we have those approvals from Tax dot. And that is going to be funded, which is a project that is included in the plan, I think, that we talked about earlier tonight. Next three, item 79 are all development projects. All of those are underway. Our different states are waiting on easements and approvals between school district and county right away for some of that work. Page three of our reports, start at the top. The County Water and Water Management, again, that project is on hold for the downtown improvements project as well as the green construction plan for the doubt that is in relation to the downtown improvements. Your TBS permit amendment, we expect to review back from the state in December. So that was also been, and that was to amend your permit to allow the Town Creek Plant to be expanded in the future as we've been talking about with the other projects. And then item 13, the Buffalo Springs Drive, great construction and traffic signal project. We did receive a home depot deposit last week. So we are now officially underway on all that. Last week, the geotech was completed. Apple Fields and the Zimbores will do those recommendations for summary to not have the same issues that we're having with the road that the city has seen. As well, survey was out last week, so they're wrapped up. Interportion, so we can do things underway. Developments are listed, getting the high points. We did approve plans for the lift station and line 224, which is November 15. Home depot plans were very thoroughly eased. We did receive and provide comments to the Red Center on November 15, that we talked about earlier. Underway construction, we talked about the November 15 projects, but we have it right now. From the public infrastructure standpoint, obviously Blue Bay is underway. Disco tires underway, and a couple others around soon. Town Creek Crossing, section one, we did have a re-inspection of their construction back on October the 10th. And they are working to address those items. Tax dot projects are listed. On page five, our report, you'll see at the bottom updated pictures. There's a period of what I see dragged by the intersection occurrence and most are marked by Buffalo Springs. For the most of our bridge, I'm sorry, just to jump to this one, they're still waiting on the puntous items, which is really a term establishment at this point. And that is all I have for you.
Press on 1097 of Buffalo Springs Traffic Signal, that was talked about three years ago?
It was.
Yeah. So, and then now they don't have construction for a few more years?
So Tax dot has accepted the study that was provided. Because so this was, so this study ended the study at Buffalo Springs 105 at the same time, submitted to Tax dot at the same time. Buffalo Springs 105 was a future condition that warranted the study for development. 1097 was warranted today or at that time in 2021, based on the traffic. Tax dot didn't have it in their budget and doesn't have it in their budget to complete for. So the latest they gave us was the earliest time was 2026. They would have funds available to complete that project.
How many, do we know how many accidents have happened there?
I do not. But, your tree, I'd say we could find out.
I didn't think there was a fatality.
There's been, there's been a few accidents, not super mountain. The ones that have been there have been pretty, all of them come to damage to injuries to people. It's caused that curve.
Yes, it is because of the curve.
No doubt.
It's hard to judge.
People will come out. So again, the accidents that are there, they have been injured, injured by that.
Well, we'll get with the chief because the Tax dot did recognize, because I know, you know, the place to work put in regarding Buffalo Springs 105. And that definitely got their attention is what started it. So all the same process, 1097, I guess.
So the fact that there's a whole bunch of rooftops over there hasn't gotten their attention?
Yeah.
Maybe the CTE center will get it?
Yep. Back to the 105 Buffalo Springs, did they, I know they were pushing back on the report we did, we provided to them.
There were, so I have to go back and I don't have the ladies in front of me. There's a back and forth because again, most of the future warrant conditions are now either underway or not. Plus some. And so that was our responsibility is, you know, if we rerun a study, we're spending, you know, 7,500 bucks to do a study that it's there, probably around today. Disco tire isn't open, but there's a foundation that's really going to build. And by the time you have the signal to get in the equipment, we're talking, you know, this is going to be done at that time. And that and the number of homes that will be completed in Town Creek Crossing is going to be the majority of all, you know, for the next year and a half. And those are the two remaining warrants for that condition. So that was pushed back. I noted as additional correspondence, but I, I don't know exactly the number of that.
But between the completion of Town Creek Crossing and the, and the starting of Pulte on 1097 towards that intersection back and forth, surely they can be compelled, I would hope, to move it up a year if at all possible, so.
We're talking about a different lifestyle.
There was once a discussion of a flyover going to connect that, the lower part of 1097 up to 1097 West. Is that still in their plans or?
So I don't know about a flyer. I know there was, we're scraping it out of the curb. So going from behind, essentially behind this, this part, to shrink that curb out and make it where it meets up with 1097. But I think it's more of a thorough rear plan, not a, you know, they're actually pursuing any type of acquisition of property right away, et cetera.
Any other questions, comments? If not, thank you. Item 16, city administrator.
Good evening, Mayor. Earlier this month, I attended the International City Managers Conference in Austin. I can't wait to see these done there. Austin is a little, not what I expected my first time there.
You thought you left.
Did you keep it weird?
You thought you, you thought you left Texas when you got there, probably, in some way.
Hey, so some of the things that are being coming up, I want to give you a heads up on. So these kind of reflect the priorities we discussed in our strategic planning session. Number one, number one, obviously is to be working on this hydrology issue. That, that is the priority right now. It's not on your, but that is what I've been working on, have been working on. Next is the issuing of the RFQ for planning services to make sure that we're staying on top of our zoning orders update, future land use map update, doing all of our smaller master plans that we talked about soon. See that coming up. Impact fee update to add loads to our, to our impact fees. We're going to issue an RFQ for a water rate study. Issue an RFQ for class compensation study. We're working on the hiring of the economic development director for the economic development corporation. Job description right now is being reviewed by the summit committee, but we anticipate that being published next week or two. And then we have the creation of water infrastructure, water operations advisory position, it's advisory, so. TML's reviewing right now our risk management carriers and make sure we're compliant. Soon as I get it back, you'll see it back in the agenda. That's all I have.
That's for Austin. Okay. All right, so I entertain a motion to approve the departmental, departmental reports, items nine through 16.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Carol, second by Casey. Motion's debatable, minimal, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving departmental reports, items nine through 16, say yes. Yes. If the votes say no, we will approve the departmental reports. Before we go into executive session, Sean Davis, just kind of wave at everybody. This is, this is a very valuable asset to our transportation advisory committee. We had that formative meeting before this meeting and I will prize you with some of that. But I wanted to put some eyes on her. She's a very valuable commodity for us and, and so she lives in the city. And so I'm very enthused. So thank you for being here. All right. Executive session, the city council reserves the right to adjourn in a closed session. Executive session is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter 551 of the Government Code of the State of Texas, sections 551.071, consultation with attorney, Town Creek and Atkins Creek Hydrology Project. And it is 6:42 and we are adjourned in the executive session.
It is 7:15 and we are back from executive session. Does someone have a motion?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to authorize Gary to solicit qualification for a hydrology study.
Motion's by Casey, second. Second's by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, surprise majority vote. All in favor of Casey's motion, say yes. Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve as stated. So, council inquiry.
Gary, what was that water spout thing that was in the picture? It wasn't sewer, obviously. Was it a sprinkler head?
No, Mike told me where it was. I missed that camera.
Okay, yeah. Okay, good. I just forgot where it was.
Where it was, it was high ground.
Yes, it was.
Ooh, I came by there and it was way up in the scatters.
Any others? Did I miss something?
Chris, do you know who is coming down College Street and Pond Street and looking at what these people are doing? Do you know who's doing that? Who's inspecting them?
Oh, that's the sewer guy. Yes, that's our inspector today.
Is he coming every day?
He, I can look him up. Last time I was out there, I think he's probably everywhere other than, uh, not every day. But if there's an issue, just let me know.
Well, I don't know that there's an issue because I don't know what they're really doing except digging big holes and causing... Having lots of pipe everywhere.
Let's send out some real, uh, uh, work.
Who's gonna tell Joel he's in their fantasy?
But they're, they were on Pond Street.
They're gonna be all, they're gonna work.
Yeah, right. But are they digging up an old line and putting in a new line?
Yes, so right now what they're doing, they're doing the point repairs. So they're digging down, tapping down a section of whole pipe, putting in a section of new pipe. Once all that work is complete, they'll go back through and then they'll do a lighter. So they'll do, so it'll be a seamless repair from available to available after they do all the point repairs. So right now they're doing the digging stuff and then they'll go back and set up a pretty good line. So when you should, if they're working in front of your house, you should be getting door tags. If you don't, please let me know because that is a item. We've been checking. When they tell us, you know it's object that they're out there. But if they're on your street or especially in front of your house, uh, sounds like, no.
Any others?
I saw one tag today and they weren't even in front of that house. They brought them out the first week that they started telling everybody they were coming.
Yeah, so what's required evidence? They're supposed to, the initial was to kind of lighten everyone. Then they're supposed to do 48 hours in advance of going onto that, back into that pot. So if they're gonna dig up in the yard, we're supposed to put a tag, specific 48 hours in advance, hey, where they're, sounds like battle words. I will open that up.
Okay.
Okay, others? Okay, so we had an outstanding opening transportation advisory committee meeting earlier and the school district representative, the director did show for that, so that was kind of a bonus. We do have plans to incorporate our own engineers without any engineer costs type of thing to kind of piggyback off of regular staff meetings. So we've set one for Friday, December this 1st and that kind of gets the engineer expertise. Sean Davis is highly qualified to help us not only in Conroe but also with the commissioner's office and has some good connections that we're already trying to work there for that. And she did get apprised of the grand plan, kind of the old picture and where we've been, especially with the Longstar Parkway. So on November the 16th, there is a texted open house. Uh, they're, so they're in that phase of open house. Here's what we're about to do. From 1791 coming from the north into, it's four and a half miles from my guess and I substantiated that. It's probably about where 1097 begins. So from there, 1791 to 1097 is a five foot on each side widening and fortification project. So if you're interested in that, that is November the 16th from 5 to 7 at the Longstar Community Center. You can walk through, see their pictures and stuff at ours. At ours. That's what made me think, well, how far y'all going? So I think that's probably gonna be 1097. So no, I haven't heard any other noise about expanding 149 through the town. But since that's on the north side, perhaps they're willing to revisit that at some point. And so that's available to you as well.
You said it was December 1st at 10?
December the 1st at 10 is our next transportation meeting.
You were talking about, you said November the 16th?
Yeah, November the 16th.
So that's from the Grimes County line and then from 1791?
Yep.
Grimes County line what?
Yeah, from 1791.
Yeah, that's where the Grimes County line is and Montgomery takes over, I guess, coming south.
Yeah, they're already on 1375.
Yeah. Anything else?
I don't know my numbers. I have no idea where they are.
1791 is like going to Noroville.
Yeah, and then the next one is when you go to Huntsville, 1375.
1391, okay.
1375.
1391, that road going that way and that road going to Huntsville.
1391, that's where City Hall Cafe is.
Yep.
Yeah, 1375 is the new way.
Yes.
And, yeah, okay.
And speaking of cafe, I had a good cafe experience. Now I'm trying to remember where I was. Hang on just a second. I wrote it down. Yeah, a guy named Brian Kolselman called me back. I was at Farmhouse Cafe and I want to tell you, he talked about some...
In Huntsville?
Yeah, it was Huntsville.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, he calls me back and he says, uh, I said, you know, home-cooked meals, everything like that. So he calls me back and he says, matter of fact, I am interested in Montgomery. So he's gonna come in and I'm gonna show him around and I said, you know, when you bake stuff downtown, people smell it.
Tell them to bring a cake.
And, you know, they wanna come and stay around. Addition to that, and you'll hear more about it at the next meeting, is I had a really good kind of opening prayer and PR and just a really good feeling about that art gallery. And I took some pictures, put it on Facebook and, you know, really good culture. The couple did it right. You need to walk through there and just see a really high-quality conversion of, we call it purple. I'm just saying. Planning is only, call it some form of blue or whatever it is.
It's jazzy blue.
Jazzy blue.
Jazzy blue. Well, whatever that is, they did a fantastic job on the remodel. And it is, it is a really nice experience and a young lady, anyway, I'll tell you more about her painting. But I got a real nice offer on that. So they were really happy that we were there and represented the city that way. It was a long time coming for that couple. Anyway, thanks for the P and Z and the staff working with them to make that happen. It was a long time dream for that couple. Trying to bring some culture to the downtown. All right?
Looks like the Tea House is about to open.
Finally? Okay, that's good.
Saw lights on and furniture.
That's good.
You think she is?
No.
Have y'all seen her?
No.
Oh.
You see anybody for Representative Teahouse?
The Tea House, Julie?
I have not.
You seen her?
No.
See?
I don't think, I don't think.
So she got lights on, furniture all in there.
Really?
Yeah.
Anyways.
I thought that was a fast one.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a second? According to Casey, we are adjourned at 7:20.
Hey, oh, congratulations. You're the big guy on P and C.
Welcome again to...